I'll call for the October 20, 2022 meeting of Mayor and Council. I'd like to call Pastor Johnny Corbin, North Austin Church of God, to lead some prayers. Remain standing for the pledge as well.
First of all, Lord, we thank you, Lord Jesus, for this opportunity to be in this place. We thank you for these that you have put into this particular ministry. Well, Lord God is the City Council and the Mayor, and we ask you to minister to their lives, oh Lord God. Lord, let everything that is done, done with their heart and mind towards you, that you might be glorified in everything that is done in this city and this county, oh God, for your glory and honor. Thank you for your love and blessings toward us in all the situations that arise, God. We pray, God, that we will always pray first and allow you to work on our behalf, and we're going to give you praise, God, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing and essence of our own.
Before I move on to the approval of the events from our last meeting, I think I've lost count of how many of the Leadership Lounge Youth League are out in our audience right now. They would all stay in, please. That's almost all that remain. Be sure to tell your classmates that you've only got one meeting in November. Thank you all very much. Thank you for the interest in our community. I have two thoughts to City Council regular meeting from October 6th. If you've had time to look over the minutes from that meeting, Council, any changes to that, any additions or deletions? Saying none, minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to I have three bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Consideration of bids purchase a bucket truck, bucket lift truck for the Engineering Department. Ben O'Dowd, our City Engineer, will present. Ben, how do you want it?
Good evening, Mayor Council. The Traffic Division of the Engineering Department is seeking to replace one of our traffic sign signal maintenance bucket trucks. The truck in question is vehicle number 1748. It's a year 2000 Ford F-350. It has 75,000 miles on it, but these trucks run continuously while they're on the job site, so that doesn't truly reflect the wear and tear that's on this vehicle. It has aged, and it is beginning to become a safety concern for my staff, and so we're seeking to replace it. We've allocated in this year's budget $90,000 for this vehicle. And again, what we're facing on all fronts is shortages and long lead times. We've sought alternatives for this particular vehicle, and we're seeing lead times upwards of 18 to 24 months for comparable prices. Thankfully, we were able to find a vehicle via the Georgia State Contract Price through Akins Ford in Wynder, Georgia for $162,700. This vehicle is available immediately. They're currently holding it for us. We have the option to purchase this vehicle. I would recommend that we purchase this vehicle. I don't appear to answer any questions you have about this vehicle.
Council, any questions for Ben? Ben, thank you. Council, cheers for action.
Mayor, I make a motion to set the bid for $162,700 for the bucket lift truck.
Chair. I will vote you into the second. Any further comments other than "ouch"? All in favor, show a hand. Endless, thank you, Council. We want the local funding request. I have made consideration of our request to approve the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding for the small business grant program allocation. Kristy Moore, Austin County Chamber of Commerce, Dwayne Johnson, Black Business Alliance Representative, will present. Welcome to the meeting. Thank you for your hard work in this matter.
Thank you. All right, as always, welcome. My name is Dwayne Johnson, and this is Kristy Moore. We're here to report out on the ARPA Small Business Grant Proposal. Thank you. I'm just going along with the slides you can have, you can see there. Our committee was appointed by the City Council a while back, and just to go over our gracious participants of the council, excuse me, of the committee, as follows. Nick Harden, Stephen Hedin, Dwayne Johnson, Chris Jones, Kristy Moore, Nick Perry, Justin Purvis, Rico Ramsey, Katrina Sermons, Miguel Vicente, and Carly Walker. We wanted to just kind of give you a rundown or a repeat of how we got here today. We started out with the following process. The committee met twice thus far and created an application for the consumers of the grant to be able to submit. The goal here was really to create a fair, accessible, and easy process, and I think very much that we accomplished that with the help of the committee, which was its greatest intent. We did get to a point where we got the opportunity to send out these lovely postcards to every individual business that is a Boston City business license holder. Applications were finally sent out on the, went live on the city website on September 7th. Regarding the process, we first had a pre-application review period that lasted from September 6th through September 21st, and that gave applicants an opportunity to submit their application for review and feedback at no risk to them. It's very, very helpful. 157 applicants took advantage of that, which was a great opportunity. Then we held two town hall info sessions where more than 150 attendees got a chance to hear about this process that we're going over today. Those were held on September 13th and September 14th. And then finally, the application period for final review and submission was conducted on September 26th through October 17th, which is just past. I'll turn it over to Kristy.
As Dwayne mentioned, we really worked through as a committee to make sure that we were making this as fair and accessible as possible across the city of Austin. Part of that, I will say, y'all know these are ARPA funds, they're coming from the feds. They have their own regulations, but of course, we're keeping it legal, don't worry. We made sure that we followed their criteria, so some of this is not that our committee chose this way. This is kind of the way the federal government dictates in terms of ranking priorities. So our funding criteria, you see on the left side, our tier one was in the qualified census tract, and also they had to be minority women or veteran owned business-wise. The tier two was just in the qualified census tract. Tier three would have been minority woman or veteran owned. They're still in the city, just not in the qualified census tract. And then tier four would be everyone else. So that means they're in the city, but they're not qualified census tract, and they're not women and veteran owned. I know there were a lot of questions about why the qualified census tract. That came from the feds. Yes, we know it is an arbitrary, it feels arbitrary to everyone here. It does not follow, you know, the city of Austin, God, it doesn't follow anything specific, but that's what the feds suggested, and so that is why we followed it. You can see on the right side, I'm sorry, that print is a little small. I apologize for that, but you can see the breakdown that we were saying they would qualify. This is gross receipts, and it's important to note that that's receipts, not net income. So we allow them to use whatever the best year, 2019, 2020, or 2021, for gross receipts. You can see the breakdown, and they did have to show proof of that, of course, to see they were eligible for a maximum grant anywhere from $5,000 to $30,000. And then we, one thing I am very proud of with that pre kind of review period, that we had so many people apply, and I will say, out of those, I think we had one application that was perfect. So I do think that was really important and helped people just take that time and feel a little more reassured through the process. But you can see, here's a breakdown of our applications. In total, we received 234, and you can see absolutely the biggest group was the qualified census tract and minority women and veteran owned businesses, and that's 108 of those. Also, I just realized that, you can see the numbers, it's 77 and 21. They got mixed up on the line. So we're coming to you tonight on behalf of the committee to ask you to consider giving more than the $1 million that you already gave ARPA for small business. And we understand that as a committee, we really had no idea what the response would be. The only really experience anyone had had to that point was the nonprofits, which their application process was very different. This is a reimbursable grant, and we did include a copy of the application behind the presentation in case you had questions about it, but this wasn't, you didn't have to tell us what you were going to do with the money. We wanted it to be as objective as possible. If you met the criteria, great. We didn't want anyone to have to put a value judgment on whether your business is more important than your business. We didn't want that. But you can see, we came up with, if everyone was funded at the level that they requested, it would be $4.23 million. And a positive note, that means we've got the word out, and our business community is very interested in what the city's doing, and they've worked hard. So I do think that's a good way to look at it. And then we've got, and you can see the breakdown. That's option one. We would love to have an extra $3 million. We also recognize that's probably not realistic, but we did want you to see that part.
Sure. Option two actually allows us to fund fully tier one, which is the, as we call it, the first bucket. Tier two also would be fully funded under this option as well. The numbers fall out for those two numbers as two, roughly over $2 million for tier one, and then $600,000 at tier two. Then at that point, we got a little creative to basically try to lower the cost to the city in that case. Tier three would be $2,500 each, and of course, tier four, as you can see, at, excuse me, $1,000. That would be a proposed total of $2.88 million.
And another option, which we can get creative as a committee and come up with other options, we're grateful for any dollar that you give this committee, but another option would be to fully fund tier one, and then the next three tiers break down to tier two, $5,000 each, tier three, the $2,500, and tier four, $1,000 each. One thing we would like y'all to consider is, we absolutely could do, you've got $1 million, it's going to be eaten up by probably 40 businesses if we do that. The first, they're going to be qualified census tract and minority women veteran owned. It's going to be 40 people, and that will be it. But if we could approach it with one of these creative approaches, we'll have an ability to still impact the majority of businesses that did apply and were eligible. And I wouldn't presume to know what it's like to sit in your seats, but I do know that y'all really value your business community, particularly those, what's important to note with these is they stayed open throughout the pandemic. They kept their employees, they did the things, they made the hard decisions, and they really kept our community going. So this is a way that we could still impact everyone. It might be a smaller scale, but I work with these businesses all the time, and they're not going to turn down any amount of money. That's what I'll tell you. So that's just something, we're happy to answer any questions. We really want to come to you with gratitude for making the business community a priority. We're overwhelmed by the response that we've had. It's been great to work through our committee and hear the different perspectives, but we truly appreciate y'all making that a priority for our community.
Thank you again for the hard work today. Closest invite for final, let Council ask a few questions. I just want to make you aware of what's going on next door currently. On Tuesday, we did the first of the minor health repair ARPA meetings. It's kind of a workshop to tell everybody what the application process is. 65 people showed up at noon on Tuesday, and that makes that, 100 applications did go out, thank you. There's about that same amount who's showing up over there right now for this meeting as well, and there were only a lot of 350,000 public, so that's, that's going to be an ask as well, just to let you know what we're up against, not we're up against, what we're up against. Gaslighting questions for you, Dwayne or Kristy?
Yeah. The 108, the number there of the QCT and that tier one option, are, how many of the, I mean, I guess the question is that it says maximum grant amount is 5, 10, 20, 30. So y'all maxing out every 108? So if there are 20 of them, are they getting $5,000? If there's 30, it meets the gross amount of 50 to 100, they getting the $10,000?
No. To answer your question, though, the way this, where we are kind of right now is that with the help of the Finance Department, we've been able to understand if everyone who submitted that is eligible at this point, if you were eligible for $5,000, that's what the total is on the following slides that you're referring to. But naturally, there may not be a one-to-one ratio of the receipts that match the ask, so that value will likely go down. Does that help answer your question?
Yes. And I do think, I will say, you know, the Finance Department's done an amazing job. Crystal has been great. Y'all should give her a round of applause because she really has been amazing, but I know they're still going through all the receipts, and so that certainly could lower the amount, but we do have a committee meeting on Monday where we had kind of agreed on a timeline. We're grateful for our two City Council Representatives who sit on the committee so that we can get this done. The goal was to have checks out by the end of the year. We felt like we had been told we need to make this happen pretty quickly, and we did try to make it as quick as possible, but I do think one thing you might be asking, Andy, is whether at that fully funded level, that does mean that everyone's receiving whatever their max, if their receipts match it? So yes, to that, but we will not be able to fully fund all the levels, no matter what, unless y'all want to give us $4 million.
Can I see option five? What option was it? I think it's option one. Let me read.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let me guess that one is, what's option two? That's what I was thinking. Option two, you said tier one and two, they'd be fully funded, and I think it hit something like that because, well, that one, tier one and two, something like $5,000, $10,000, something like that. So we're just saying if your receipts match that, who am I, then you can get that full amount.
And I will say, the majority of businesses, if they were eligible for $10,000, they found $10,000 to submit receipts, but there were some that might have submitted $8,500. So we're certainly not going to fund more than the receipts that they submitted. That's part of, you know, a federal requirement is to have that reimbursement side, but the option two would fund everyone in that qualified census tract. And the federal government assumes that if your business is in the qualified census tract, that you have, you are already at a disadvantage.
One other thing I heard you say something about, you say that it was a reimbursable grant?
Yes. So something that's very different than the nonprofit was, you did have to submit receipts for items that you spent money on already. So it could have been anywhere from July 1st of 2020 until basically whenever they submitted, and there were specific areas based on the federal grant. Most people used mortgage and utilities. For most businesses, whatever their max was, they had spent enough on space or utility. Honestly, many of them just on utilities, had spent their max enough, because the federal government did already have PPP to help with payroll, but there has really not been anything to help specifically the way that this grant is structured.
Council, any further questions?
Well, I think it's important to make sure everybody understands that what the committee is trying to do is find out what amount of money, if any, the council would allocate in addition to the $1 million. Once they have that number, whatever that number ends up being, they then can go, okay, here's how much we have to work with, and this is how we feel best it needs to be divided out. Obviously, with the understanding that, you know, tier one's obviously the priority. We'd love to be able to fund tier one and tier two in particular, but there is a realization that, you know, that we can't allocate that much money towards it. So once they have that type of number, they'll follow up Monday at midnight, and then they will begin drafting the list and how much each business is going to be eligible for, and they'll bring that back to us at our first meeting next month. We'll have a work session to take a look at it, work session to have a presentation on it, and then we will have that list voted on at our November 10th meeting, and right after that, checks can start going out to these small businesses and getting them some help. So that, that's where we're at with this.
Do you want to add one other question too? And I guess, Mark, when you were at the sense, I forgot when I say, if we do allocate it, because I remember well, on our list, when we were allocating $30,000 of money, then so much for like the small business and everything like that, because I remember very well, I said, is this written in stone, this amount that we would allocate to? And the question came up that it was not, but we had allocated all the funding that we had, so who do I ask?
We are fully allocating our 16.2, but as we discussed before, that's not set in stone. We can reallocate as projects need more, or maybe a project's going to be less than we anticipated as well, so we can continue to reallocate to the full 16.2 million dollars is gone. So there is room for reallocation to other projects on the list that we have. It was not set in stone, that was just our starting point to get going with.
You were asking for 15,000. Can't you just give more, more, too? I mean, one maybe.
Well, here, I have a great question. I knew you were going to ask.
I was going to give you two. I thought you needed one.
In your agenda package, just for a starting point, I just want to get to a starting point. I asked for an additional 1, 1.5 million. That would fully fund tier one and two. Is why, that was our starting point, because that's, that's the spirit and the intent of the ARPA law, so I thought that would be a good starting point, fully fund the first two buckets, and that's about $1.550 with a little left, maybe even more than that once we finish the whole, get off of the applications process. So that's how I came up with $1.550.
Any further questions, Council?
Well, I think to make sure every member of Council understands that currently, where that, if we were to agree to 1.5, that's going to come from the allocation we made for the train project down here on Griffin Avenue versus Deney House.
Well, it's not just that, it's also the fact that we've had several other requests as well, such as the housing that's now come up that we didn't realize we were going to have as many folks to come in and put applications in for. And I mean, at that amount, I mean...
You'll have a food bank back before you, if you're very sensitive.
Yeah, food bank back and forth. I mean, there's several things that we're going to pull from that pot.
Right.
I'd find we give an additional $1 million, you know, with knowing as far as like the other things we have going on that's coming out, I mean, we don't have, we're limited in that pot.
That's where we are.
I heard you, I know you were saying we're limited, but I know I heard something that we have extra money that we could do. I did hear...
But remember, this project doesn't stand alone by itself, and everything we mentioned in the war comes back in, so.
And we've already helped some of those already, so they're coming back again. Okay. But I still think we should allocate to them.
So, Mark, were you asking for a motion tonight on this 1.5? Is all, or do y'all want to, what do y'all ask?
You got options to stand pat, or you can come up with a number and move forward.
But we don't want to stand pat, you know, that means then we need to make, you asked us for a decision tonight?
I think we'd prefer a decision, Max, so the committee can give back. Yes, again.
Yes, we can. All right. Council, any further discussion or questions for the two, well, let's put it this way, any further questions for the two people standing?
So what we're making a decision for tonight is to go ahead and so that they can move on.
Any further questions for the two standing in front of us?
I do have a question. If we, if we make a decision tonight on this, then that means y'all go ahead and move for, we're getting, I guess, we're getting ready to allocate the amount to the people. Do you already have candidates that you know who are in the ARPA, applying already? Do you have, you know, applicants?
I mean, quite frankly, we'll have, we spent like the last hour and a half, the day before, coming up with this allocation proposal. So what we'll need to do is based on the number that is given to us, we'll need to come up with how that's allocated based on, you know, the numbers that we came up today, with the intent, as usual, to fully fund tier one, and then how the remaining impacts the rest of the tiers.
And also, all of the applications are already submitted, so we certainly will do our best. And one thing I would mention is tier three, I know that that wasn't in the QCT, but we're still talking about our minority women veteran owned businesses. There aren't many of them that are literally across the street from the QCT that, I think we, if we all drove down those roads, would say they're just as disadvantaged as the ones on the other side, they just had luck of the draw. So that's why, as we looked at these numbers, it was important for us to try to do something for those, that tier three.
So when are you planning on cutting the checks?
Check? No, I'm just kidding. We're having a meeting on Monday as a committee, we are already planning to meet on Monday to decide whatever allocation y'all decide tonight. We'll talk through the different scenarios that the committee could decide. We would then have to bring it back before City Council with the final numbers, where that wouldn't change the number, that would just get your final approval, just like you had to get final approval for the nonprofit.
You'd actually have the list of a lot of it on that thing, right?
Yes, so that would be end of Nov, we come to the beginning of November, so I would imagine checks would be cut by the end of November.
That week.
You have busy staff, I'm not going to put that pressure on them.
All right, any further questions? More of the two presenters. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know Nick's out there too. Thank you guys for the hard work in this committee. All right, Council, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, you take the city managers' request for 1.5 people.
Have a motion. They'll give it a second, I'll entertain another motion.
Mr. Mayor, I really wanted to second Eric's motion. It's still my bad, I wanted to second that motion, but in all fairness, I know the rehab project's going to need some additional funding. A lot of folks out there that, you know, leaky roofs and falling down the porches, et cetera, and that, I don't want to be greedy, but I am a member of the Small Business ARPA Committee, and I would have loved to have said, let's give him $4 million, but, but in knowing that we need to have some money available for other projects and to play fair with those projects, I'd like to make a motion for $1 million in additional funding.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any further comments, any further discussion now? All in favor, show a hand. Two in favor. If you're this, aren't you? All in opposition? Try breaking vote immediately, and the motion passes. Thank you. Good luck with the money. I was hoping for five of you here tonight. All right, I have five citizens to be heard. For set of the meeting, we ask you to come forth and state your name and address so that we can have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to Council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of Council today. It is the Council's policy to immediately follow up with you and your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the Council designate one spokesperson to represent the group, again, to ensure that all have time to be heard. And having said that, do we have any citizens to be heard here tonight?
Good evening. I'm John Robinson, 327 San Julian Circle of Lake Park. I presented to Council with the letter that I feel is necessary to be presented here. I'm just going to read a couple of paragraphs, but I don't really have the time for the three minutes today that I really want to need to talk about. that I really want to need to talk about. The Black community experience loneliness of being outside due to the lack of economic justice. Their own economic prosperity has never stretched to the Black community. Therefore, we, as a community, are asking you, as mayor and council, to act as the advocate of the United States federal government for helping and correcting decades of injustices. We are asking for funds to restore to the guidelines that are also suicide. This letter is written for straight talk. Now, I'm not going to get into everything on this letter, but this letter is based upon your own findings from your analysis of impediments. The problems that have existed in this city for quite some time, and no one seems to act as if they want to really address them. From your own analysis of impediments, it says, "The data of the table shows the modern income classes of income with the highest number of households for whites were $60,000 to $124,999 in income class, and 20% of whites were income in this range. Most frequently reported, the income of African-American households are less than $10,000 to $19,000 range, and 40% of African-Americans is in this range." The problem, this seems to be part of the major problem. And then it reads, in the next paragraph, it says that $46,602 for white households, well, $23,452 for the African-American households virtually cut in half. Our children are murdering each other on the street because of the problem of being in the city, because of the lack of economic equality. We have a tremendous problem here, and this problem needs to be dealt with, and you as a collaborative body is the one that makes the decisions to make this happen. I know what I say is here, sometimes it may not take me very seriously, but I want to explain something. I was the lead plaintiff in a civil litigation that lasted 20 long years. Manuel Noriega was in the basement during the trial. I had Dennis Garcia and Scaroni, the owners of the island Motte, as my attorney. I had...
Mr. Robinson, will follow up when you have the word.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
That's the problem, people.
Is there any other citizens to be heard at this time?
Good evening. My name is Gracie Bacon, I live on 708 Holly Drive, Valdosta. And this is Donna Head, and she lives on Holly Drive, too. We have a problem, we still got the junk yard as worse than ever. But we have another problem, and I don't know how you all want to address this problem. We have a man at 701 Holly Drive. He's renting, he's not renting the whole house, he's renting rooms in the house. He has signs outside, it's not something I'm making up. There are signs outside advertising that you can rent a room, just like you could at Holiday Inn. And in his house, this is a residential area, this is a family orientated community. This is not, you can rent a motel on Holly Drive. But he has put up the signs, if you drive by Holly Drive today, they're out there. 701, you don't have to get off of Lee Street. He's got the old sign, rooms were rented, he's got all that junk right out there. So I'm not making that up, it's there. Also, Holly Drive has become a speed trap. You know, everybody's racing through and going over to the next one. We have a lot of children on that street, and people are going through there going 80 and 90 miles an hour. We need some speed bumps on that street, you know? Because what we allow to happen, one person come in and do illegal stuff, you're inviting a crowd in, you all let it go. So the man now says he's doing it down the street, let's go ahead and make us a rooming house. So this man is renting a house, renting rooms. He's not renting the whole house, he's renting rooms. He can't keep tenants, they leave in two or three months. But now he decided to rent rooms. I don't know about you, but I don't think we should be renting rooms in a residential neighborhood for families. If he's going to rent anything, rent the whole house, but that's not what he's doing. And it's not cheap what he's doing. So he's going to make a lot of money, and I just want to know if Valdosta City is going to get some of that tax since he's running a rooming house on Holly Drive. And what, why do they have to follow codes? She's got a daycare, we got a personal care home on that street. They have to follow the codes for the city and the state. Why doesn't he have to follow any codes? Why aren't you all down there saying, where are your fire things? Where are your handicap ramps? Where's your lighting? Where's your electrical system? But you all are not down there. This man is right there facing Lee Street. You don't have to turn on Holly Drive, he's got it right there in your faces. So I know you're seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you, it's big. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Hello? Hi. Um, okay, so my name is Robin Phillips Brown, I live over by inner perimeter. And I know I'm not a Valdosta native, but I moved down here in 2009 because my high school, we always used to come down and get beat by rounds. So, one thing they tell you in orientation is, we want you to stay in Valdosta, we want you to start a family, start a business, we don't want you to go back home, we want you to stay in Valdosta. And I have a cleaning company based out of Atlanta, and I also do taxes down here. But the issue is, is that, and also, you can know, from 2009 up until now, I've lived in Valdosta about, moved back and forth about three times. So I actually decided in August 2020 during the pandemic, like, I want to stay down here in Valdosta for my business. But the thing is, is that there's not a lot of resources for small business owners. The main issue that I'm having, because I do taxes, so you know, when you do taxes, it's different, you know, in Atlanta, and I completely get it, I want to be down here for a reason. But the people who own the commercial properties, they do not upkeep the properties, they're not priced at a fair value. They want you, they tell you all these things, we'll have the property ready in three weeks, then you finally call them, it's three months. Then they want you to do all these other repairs, and it's like, okay, as a small business owner, that's not fair. And the thing, well, I'm not going to say it's not fair, but it's just like, how am I really supposed to grow? And the thing is, is that I'm friends with other councilmen, congressmen in Atlanta, they've invited me to come to their districts. I have one that's like, I'll help you for three years, you get what I'm saying? And just move your whole entire tax business, he knows I'm here in Valdosta. He's like, move your whole business to my district, and I'll give you whatever it is that you need, the resources, you need a decent space, you need help paying for the business license. He's like, I'll pay for all of that, just move to my district. And it's like, I don't want to move there, you get what I'm saying? I don't want to leave this, I don't want to leave Valdosta. But at this point, it's kind of like, probably another two years, if I can't find something reasonable, I'm going to be forced to move to his district, because I don't get any help, or there's no one enforcing the people who own all these commercial properties to upkeep their property. And one thing, like, since I do do taxes, you know, there's a whole strip of empty buildings. And technically, y'all could be making money. I watch the city council meetings, and it's like, the city is losing money, they can't find money. And it's like, if y'all would enforce these people to do something to their properties, you could get someone like me in, you know, to do, like, to basically pay taxes, to help with the Georgia State Patrol pension, to help with just other things. So, that's just all I want to say, like, there's not a lot of resources for small business owners. It's very difficult.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard?
George, I'm Ryan, 5604, open up to Valdosta, Georgia. I want to thank you all for serving the people. People come up here tonight and they bring their issues before the elected officials. I really didn't have nothing to say tonight, but I had two people that tell me, or they asked me, Ryan, why don't you bring up about the water fountain at Marley and Keane? I said, I did that two years ago. And there's no water, the water fountain still don't work. And the old lady here, she's been up here for talking about her issue. And I just want you all to think about something. Valdosta is in the line, like, the Valdosta data time may not, or the TV stations and radio may not publish what is taken from the audience during service of participation and put in the paper. I've been going across 20-some cities, and what citizens say, as citizens to be heard, there's not one city I've been to where they don't put it in the paper. So at least the citizens know what their fellow citizens are saying. If that has nothing to do with you all, it may have something to do with our freedom of the press. So I'm just throwing that out. A lot of my videos is reaching worldwide. I don't go out to recruit news media to come interview me, but they are doing it. And I have to tell them the truth. About three months ago, there's a movie coming out, they interviewed me for two and a half, three hours, and I spoke the truth. Not so much about Valdosta, because they want to know about Quigley and Equipment 10 plus 2. But you may not think so, but a lot of eyes is on Valdosta. Valdosta's a growing city. So, I'm just saying, let us listen to the complaints and the recommendations of the citizens. I've been talking about the flag on the courthouse for nine years, and to fly in honor of our veterans, it's still not flying. And there's a lot of other places. I go across the state of Georgia doing what I do, and I only know of two counties, two, that does not fly a Georgia state flag over the courthouse in honor of the military personnel. If the governor called to activate the National Guard armory, that's the flag they'll be on. But they won't be on it over here, nor at Kinson County. But you go to any other, and there's other places in Valdosta. So personally, I have my own opinion why I think it's not flying, haven't flown in nine years, because they did change their old Confederate flag. And there's a great possibility that some people say, well, I'm never going to fly it. But y'all have a nice day. As I said, the eyes of this nation is focused on Valdosta. And they're going to interview people here, and I want the citizens to tell the truth, and I hope it will shine a light on all of us, that we can be proud. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Saying now close out that proportion, and turn it over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody of our festive fall celebration, that's Thursday, October 27th, at beautiful Unity Park from 5:30 to 8:30. We've got a lot of great fun planned for families at Unity Park, so I invite everybody to come out and participate and have fun with the city of Valdosta, which is not out downtown, it's also in downtown on October 27th. So we'll have several things happening downtown this week. It seems to be happening that way more frequently these days, trying to get folks downtown, have a successful collaborative effort with Vines County or the Scrap Tire event, of our thousand tires were brought in, and so that, you know, less and less on the street, and my benefit property, the young lady was speaking earlier about. So, trying to make a difference there as well. But awesome man, the public participation plan is now available on the main page of the city website, so you can take a look at that. We've had, the mayor's mentioned this, we've had, after 5:30 today, we've had two successful town hall meetings for our minor rehab repair project. We had a great turnout earlier in the week, and I'm not, Catherine, how many was over there tonight?
Probably about 50.
50, so we've had about 150 folks show up for this, so a great turnout for that. And I think that's going to be, again, as we've talked about earlier during the agenda part of the meeting, we're more than likely going to, as a body, be asking for a little allocation for that project as well. It's very popular. Pub Togo for Main Street is October 28th through 5/9. This is again, when you dress your pet up, come downtown, have fun. I think there's some contests and things of that nature. The police and fire department had a great neighborhood walk this week. They walked in the University Knox Drive area in downtown part of town, and they had a great success for that. And just remind the Fall Electronic Recycling Event, it'll be Saturday, November 19th, from 8 to noon at our city public works department. And I think I'll end my comments with that, Mayor.
That's it, Mark, thank you very much. There is a lot going on tomorrow morning. At 8:00 AM, the United Way's Day of Caring is going to also descend on Unity Park, just across the street. There will be about 140 volunteers there tomorrow morning that will go out to about a dozen of the umbrella agencies that follow the United Way, and go ahead and help with the minor repair, with landscaping and painting. Some are going out in the second hour to scoop back the sort of food, and some are going over to the Boys and Girls Club and help out over there as well. So, any other council comments, though?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to thank Dewayne, Christie, and the committee for the hard work they put into this ARPA, doing all the allocation. I know it's got to be hard to get all that together and figure out how best to do that. I agree, like Tim said, I wish we could fully fund it, but with five or four or five other things that's going to be coming at us, you know, we're limited on what we can do. But I definitely glad we at least was able to give y'all a million dollars, you know, more, to help out that little bit more. And thank you, council members, as well, for serving on that.
Yes, I would like to say something, too, to the small businesses here in Valdosta. You are of the backbone, really, of Valdosta. And some of us did try to get a little bit more help for you, but I do want to realize that there was some, and I know you heard it, they are so concerned about the other entities. There are other funding as well to help the other entities that they are talking about as well. We were trying to get, we were, y'all are here talking, trying to get money and get support for the small businesses. And that's what we were supposed to be trying to talk and help about. These other entities, when they come up, or when they start to come up with them, we'll take care of that situation. And I want you to see, and I'm just here to say, because I think it's a tragedy, that they are so concerned about others, rather than our small businesses who are trying to survive, who are trying to stay alive, who are trying to do that. And yet, and I can't, I just want y'all to know, whether they, whether they know it or not, some of the names that I heard was given tonight, they didn't have a hard time doing COVID by some of our small businesses, but they got that big concern for them. Our small businesses are the backbone, our small businesses are trying to survive, our small businesses are trying to stay here, and they will be here. These other companies and these others, that's fine, I'm not taking from them, but I don't think anybody should take from our small businesses who are trying to help. I'm a councilperson for the city of Valdosta. I want our people to thrive, I want us to have businesses, I want people to be here. I hear you, John, understand, somebody else wants hurt, come somewhere else because of what we are not providing. I'm a spokesperson for the citizens of Valdosta and the small businesses, and I just want to say, I will still continue to fight for you, to try to help you get something, to keep you here in Valdosta. And that's what I want to say.
Any other council comments at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I'm not going to be put on a pedestal or act out like I don't, I'm not for small businesses. You know, I run a nonprofit organization myself, and when it came time to put in for the funding, I didn't even put in for it. I asked my board not to, so we can take the money to allocate to other people. It's not the fact I'm not for small business, and for you to say that to act like us council members have no concern for small business is really, to me, concerning. Especially when the fact that what we're doing is trying to make sure that we don't over allocate our money, so we can help out second harvests. So what you're saying is, the second harvest is not important. You know, what you're saying is, is that helping out these other homes and houses is not important. So I'm not going to get into discussion, but I'm not going to sit quietly while, you know, you play as if I'm completely against small business. And that's not the case at all. I'm just trying to be right by the money that we have to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do to help everybody in the city.
I'm going to call you money, I'm going to call you money. I'm not saying that you don't have a concern. I worry if your weakness concerns, they came up here for the small businesses, they've been talking about the other. And since you mentioned second harvest, let me tell you, I know about second harvests, I deal with them a lot. I have a small nonprofit organization as well. I did not ask for the money. And when you talk about helping second harvest, I can tell you right now, I'm not taking it as... anything from them, I support them, I wrote letters for them, I still help them get funding and applications, I know where they can get a lot of other funding for as well. So it's not that I'm trying to take from them, no. They help a lot of people here in, in, in the city as well. But what I was saying, these people from the small businesses came up here, and at this point, this is what we should have been concerned and focused on. I did not say you did not have a concern with them. I feel like you just have maybe higher concern for someone else than not the small business who came up here tonight.
Council, you have the comments. Put before your motion to adjourn into executive session. I got it.
Sir.
Motion in the second for personnel and for legal matters. Legal matters and personnel. Motion, motion, section.
Sir.
All in favor, show a hand. Council, thank you. Everybody, thank you for your attendance tonight, you should lounge, you, thank you.